Calling to order the October 28th, 2025, regular meeting of the CUSD 201 Board of Education. Roll call.
Leah Canover.
Here.
Carlos Avia.
Here.
Adina Hoover.
Here.
Kevin Maron.
Here.
Alexandria Mill.
Here.
Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We do have, before we go into closed session, a procedural action item. The chair will entertain a motion.
Do I have to ask? Are there any nominations?
Yes, are there any nominations for the role of Board of Education Secretary for the remainder of our former secretary's two-year term?
Hello? Oh, you have the nomination.
Any nominations? Anybody?
Holy cow.
Anybody volunteering?
I'll volunteer.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Well, then, I'm going to nominate Kevin.
Thank you, Carlos. The chair will... I'm good to do this now, right? The chair will entertain a motion. I'm sorry. The chair will entertain a motion to name Kevin Maron as Board of Education Secretary for the remainder of the former secretary's two-year term.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Mill.
Yes.
Mr. Avia.
Yes.
Dr. Hoover.
Yes.
Mr. Maron.
Yes.
Ms. Canover.
Yes. Okay. The chair will entertain a motion to enter closed session to discuss specific employees' student discipline, purchase or lease of real property for the use of the pub... for the use of the public body, potential litigation, and review of closed session minutes.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We got to take a voice vote.
Voice vote, sorry.
Sorry, roll call.
Roll call.
Mr. Avia.
Yes.
Dr. Hoover.
Yes.
Mr. Maron.
Yes.
Ms. Canover.
Yes.
Ms. Mill.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Returning from closed.
Beautiful.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the October 14, 2025, regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session of the October 14, 2025, regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay. Okay. Moving on to the public comment portion of the evening. Thirty-one for public comment. I actually have a public comment, so I'm going to go up there and do it. Five minutes.
Resident Leah. Hello. Hi, Board. Resident Leah Con over here speaking. I recognized in the last week that the Village is doing a new strategic plan, and they're asking for everybody's feedback and input. And because I almost never go on Facebook and don't get the alerts, even though I've signed up a bunch of times, I didn't hear anything. I heard it like through the grapevine. So I wanted to make a statement tonight to ask everybody to fill out the strategic plan survey, which is on the Village's website. Schools are mentioned in more than 50% of the questions. So it's really important that our community shows up. And there is also an additional spot where they're asking for people to be involved in it, which is an additional form. So I recommend that everybody, I'm asking everybody to fill out the survey, but I also recommend filling out that little form and seeing if maybe you want to be part of it. It's well worth your time, so thank you.
Thank you. For your time. You're welcome.
Okay. Back to board member. Consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Number one, the approval of the October 2025 expenditure report. Number two, ratification of the September 2025 regular payroll. And number three, a donation to Miller School.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Dr. Hoover.
Yes.
Mr. Marin.
Yes.
Ms. Conover.
Yes.
Ms. Mill.
Yes.
Mr. Avia.
Yes.
Motion passes. On to information and discussion. Twenty twenty-six, 2027 calendar. I can't believe it.
I know, it seems so early to be talking about the calendar.
Woo, every year.
Well, thank you for having me this evening. I'd like to go through the process that we went through establishing our two calendars. First, I'd like to thank our calendar committee, which consisted of WTA members, WESPA, parent, volunteer, and administration. Early meetings occurred for the calendar development between myself and the WTA Calendar Committee Chair, which was Larissa Zalesko, to discuss draft calendars based on the ROE's recommendations of dates. So the dates from the ROE were to have an early start of August 17 as the earliest possible date. And the last one would be Wednesday, August 26 for the late start of a date. We also then surveyed the community to get community feedback, preference based on those two dates, the early start and the late start, and additional feedback from the community to develop our calendars. So you should have received a couple different pieces, the two calendars that we're proposing as examples of information. The survey from the community. The community had 268 responses, which was a really great population from our community. So thank you to everyone that filled that out. Based on that feedback, it showed that 68.3% of our community preferred to have an earlier start date for our calendar, and 31% wanted a later start date. We also surveyed the community to find out how to develop our calendar. So if they preferred to have single days off throughout the weeks, or to have days grouped together to help us develop our institute days and our days off. And we had 85.4% that asked for our days to be grouped together. So we took that into consideration when we were developing our calendars. We also asked what would help with our attendance pieces, because our goal is really to have that no more than five. And so what are some of the things that we can do to continue that push? And clear communication was one of the top ones. Longer weekends and days grouped together was the next one. And then just making sure that we have incentives for students to be at school. And then we also had a written summary feedback portion for our community. And a summary of that just discussed, again, wanting those group days off together, avoiding midweek breaks, and then increased communication regarding the calendar in advance. So with that said, we developed two different calendars. And we also surveyed the WTA, their own survey. During the WTA survey, they wanted to have an earlier start date. 60.5% wanted an earlier start date. The two calendars that you received, one has an August 17 teacher institute day start date with students starting on the 19th. The second one has August 24 institute date and students starting on the 26th. Both calendars in the middle are pretty much the same, just a week change. And that information is just based on the feedback that we received. We tried to group as many days as possible together to have longer weekends and longer breaks to help with the community survey feedback. So in those, some highlights. We have our fall conferences grouped together with our Indigenous Peoples Columbus Day break and having like a small fall break. Our winter-spring conferences are aligned with our countywide institute days. We have the no school on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. We have PLC dismissal on the 18th prior to winter break. Our first semester ends at winter break right before winter break, so that all the high school final exams could be completed prior. January 4 is our institute day that we have that strategically placed to be grouped with winter break, so it's a longer break for our community. And then our second semester is slightly longer, and that's to accommodate all the testing that we have for all the different grade levels. So after we developed these two calendars, we also surveyed our committee of the calendar.
Just to make sure I got it right, so between the two, that the grouping is still the same?
The grouping is the same.
A lot of those dates is just the start and finish.
Correct, yep. So our committee is recommending Calendar One as our vote to the Board, but we presented two calendars for you. Any questions?
Yeah, I only have one question, which is when do we vote on the calendar for?
At the next meeting if.
At the next meeting.
If we don't have any significant asks, then we could vote at the next meeting. Normally it's, which is right, because we normally post it right before Thanksgiving. Yeah. Yeah. I am sitting here and I'm thinking back, and I realize that you were not here at this time years ago to this same conversation. And it was like, well, these are our two calendars. Choose one. And we were like, can you please give us more? And getting some understanding of where the calendars came from. Why do we start so early? Because traditionally, especially in the last couple of years, we have a much earlier start than our neighboring districts. And understanding that part of that is because we're a unit district and getting our high school students done before winter break is really important for a lot of different reasons. Getting us more instructional time before testing season, like over the years, we've grown on our knowledge of the calendar committee. And every year, we've gotten like a little bit more and a little bit more. And like, I saw that you guys did the survey and I was like, so excited, I can't wait to see the results! And to see these results and 278 responses, we only have 1,200 children in the district. Like, that is phenomenal.
It was great.
To your point, I mean, there's some of those families that responded have multiple kids.
Yeah, but it's massive, right? That's a massive number of responses. Years ago, we put a survey out, and I think we had like 40 responses. And we were like, yeah, 278 responses, right? So it tells me that the community really cares about this. They're really happy about being asked for their feedback. And so I appreciate that, because that's a respect thing, right? We respect our community enough to ask them. And these results tell us that what our gut said over the last couple of years, adjust our calendar so that our families have more of an option to take breaks, because they're already taking them. We saw the results in our attendance for the last couple of years, and we tied it together, arguably, right? We tied it together. But this tells us that is another data point that says that that was absolutely the right Group days, earlier start, the WTA as well, right? Like, but this gives us the data to really back up the decisions, in addition to all of the reasons that it makes sense to, the testing and all of those pieces. It gives us that our community's on with it too. So like, this could not be, this is the first time that I've served on this board that this is like the easiest decision I've ever made because of this.
With, just right before spring break, not that I don't like it, but the reason for the Friday off, is that end of quarter?
It's Good Friday, so it's Good Friday, but.
Oh, that's good, okay, thank you. Do we usually have that off, though?
A lot of schools.
It's the non-attendance day. It's labeled as a non-attendance day somehow. Does it switch every year? Like, some years we do go.
Sometimes it falls during spring break of the Friday, so then they're off the Monday after spring break, so this calendar is off the Friday before. And then, Leah, to your point, we did create a comparison of different school districts in the area that have certain end dates, and our dates are very similar to the ones that are starting just.
Yeah, there was a really big discrepancy with Downers there for a while, which, which has been solved a lot with their renovations, their successful referendum, and air conditioning renovations to their, to their elementary schools. So that has been, but that was a big chunk of it, was that they started so much later so that they didn't have, there's a really big discrepancy for a while there, yeah.
Any other further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you go, Sam, Sam, will you stay up there for a second? Because we don't get a chance to do this very often. First of all, please convey to all the committee members how grateful we are for their additional time and for the quality work they did. I think Leah was expressing that. It's not just that you did an excellent job as a leader and the whole committee, very collaborative, and look what happens, and great community involvement, all the things that Leah said. The other thing I want to mention, though, is really your principalship is extraordinary, the work that you've done. I mean, the results are there, I think we know, five essentials, top 1% in the state, maybe the best in the state, incredible work there. What you do, leading your team in building capacity and chronic absenteeism, is remarkable. You lowered it from over 20% to 4.5%. That's unheard of. Top 1% in the state again, and that's your leadership. But beyond the quantifiable measures that are extraordinary, top 1% in the state here, top 1% in the state there, is your love for our kids and your team, and it's, the staff believes in you, the community believes you, the families, the students, you know every student's name, you are connected to them, you're present. Every time I walk in that building, you are positive and a problem solver and incredible leader for our district. So the things that you can measure, you're the best at, and the things that are tough to measure, you're extraordinary at. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you, I appreciate that. It takes a village, and we have an amazing team at Miller, so can't do it alone.
But it takes a leader to build a capacity of that team, and that's what you've done.
Thank you.
We did not have those results before you were there. If you do a comparison and contrast, like I said, from chronic absenteeism to the culture, climate, five essentials, and now also, we're gonna hear from Dr. Braun later, exemplary for the first time in Miller's history. So thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Sam. Dr. Braun is up with the summative designation review, and goes for 25, 26.
All right, this is my favorite presentation of the whole year.
Mine too.
Yeah, this is, this is really exciting. You're gonna see some of the most beautiful things. I think Jack probably has them framed in his hallway.
We will, we will.
So, okay, so summative designation review, I have to say this, because designations are preliminary, they'll be official on the 30th, but all of the principals already got their letter, so it's not going to change. But I have to say that just, you know, in case. So before I even give you the actual results, I think it's important to do a brief overview of what we're looking at and what it all means. So an annual summative designation, so it's a multiple measure index that the state gives us, and it, it puts together a bunch of different variables to create an index score, and I'll show you what that is. Really, it's designed to identify schools that need improvement, it's also designed to show some of the top performing schools. And luckily, we are not even close to improvement status, so that is not where we fall. So there are five annual summative designations that the state gives, exemplary, commendable, targeted support, comprehensive support, and intensive support. If a school's exemplary, it means that they're in the top 10% of all schools in the state of Illinois. They, in order to be exemplary, you can have no targeted subgroups below the all score of the lowest 5% of schools. So I know that's confusing, but really, it means we have no underperforming subgroups, and we're in the top 10% of all schools in the state. And then high schools, another little thing, is that they have to have a graduation rate of higher than 67% to even be considered for exemplary. Commendable is a huge range. It means that you are not in the top 10%, and you're not in the bottom, and you're not in the bottom 10%. So you can be this giant range to be commendable, and that is, you're just not in the top 10%, you're not in the bottom 10%, and you also have no underperforming subgroups. And then targeted, comprehensive, intensive, that's like you're, you're underperforming is what those are for. So these are the weights. So elementary looks different than high school. So the things that go into the elementary calculation is 50% of it is growth. So ELA growth is 25%, math growth is 25%. The climate survey is really just saying, are 95% or more students completed the five essentials? It has nothing to do with the actual score of five essentials, it's just saying they completed it. To me, those are like freebie points, really. I mean, you should just have that happen. Chronic absenteeism is 20% of the calculation, and to be chronically absent is you've missed 10% or more of the school year. Then there's ELPTP, which uses the access score. Each child is given an individual score, and they have five years to exit the EL program to show that they're proficient in their language. And then a score is calculated to come up with an ELPTP score. Science is 5% of it, and then proficiency together, math is 7.5%, ELA is 7.5%, and those are, to be, to get those points, the state sets a percentage every year that increases a little bit more each year to be considered on target with that. High school's a little bit different, they don't have the growth component in their, in their pie at this point. It's just a composite four, five, six-year graduation rate, which is 50%. And then the rest of the pie looks similar with math, ELA proficiency, science, the PTP, chronic absenteeism. They do have ninth grade on track, though, which is 8.3% of their calculation. So I know that's a lot of words right there, but when I show you the index score, it's not just proficiency, it takes into account all of those things to make up the overall score is what's important to know. So in, the state of Illinois does this four-step process to get your index score. So they calculate some raw performance, and then they create an indicator score between 0 and 100, and then they're weighted according to those weights of the 25%, the 5%. And then they're given an index score, and then they take every school in the entire state, their index score, and they just put them in order of lowest to highest, and then they draw a line to say top 10%, bottom 10%, all these in the middle are commendable, and that's how they.
But in essence, they are ranking all the schools in Illinois.
This year. So I'm giving you all of this information now, next year it's going to look completely different because the state is revamping the system.
But this is the process, this is the process they've used since 18, yeah. And can you go back one slide, please, for a second, Dr. Braun?
Oh, this one?
Yes. Compared to other states, I think this is a very quality indicator, because if you take a look, it's not just based on test scores and the bottom-line proficiency, which is very much determined by socioeconomic status, there's a tremendous amount of research to point to that. It has to, it looks at many different factors, and it privileges, especially at the elementary school, growth of students, which is really powerful. It's not just the bottom-line score, which of course, we know the biases that are present in standardized testing, especially norm test. The growth here is pretty phenomenal. So that's, and there are states where it's reversed, where your proficiency score is half the indicator. I could start naming those states, but we're not one of them. And they look at a number of different factors. And at the high school, it really privileges graduation rate over time, but it takes into account, you know, eight different factors. So our state, I think, even though they're gonna completely revamp this thing, really has, you know, a pretty good measurement system.
Do you have any inside?
Yeah.
On what they're revamping?
They're likely, so they have a proposed plan that they just sent out today, actually. They'll keep the pieces of the pie, but it's going to look different. I don't know that we'll get an index score like we've had, where we can kind of say like, oh, here we are compared to everyone else. I think they're trying to take away the competition of it all. So.
Unacceptable.
I think that's what they're, what they're trying to do, we'll still get really good information from it, is the goal, to get like really great information, to see our growth over time, and to see like all these little pieces of the pie and how we're doing. So that I'm excited for, that we're still gonna see all the pieces of the pie and how we're doing and how we've, we continue to grow, so.
This is a great overview, but the best part of this presentation's about to hit.
Yeah, are you ready? These are the frame, these are the framed photos that, these are the photos we're gonna frame, right? So then, the thresholds every year, what is really cool in the state of Illinois is the state of Illinois keeps getting better. So our students are becoming more proficient, and our growth, our kids are growing. So these thresholds to be exemplary and to be comprehensive are higher this year than they were last year, they're higher, you know, and every year it's gone up a little bit. So that's really good news for our kids across the entire state, that they're all growing at a great rate. So that's the, that's a really exciting thing. So here is our 201 summative designation data. Again, this is just the caveat, October 30th, it's gonna be public, so you'll be able to see it on the website. If you wanna dig in anymore to each of those individual indicators and you want more information, I'm happy to answer it for you and point you in the right direction. I just don't want you to fall asleep right now, so. Okay, so Miller, this is really fun to see over time. So this is their index score with all of those indicators combined. This is their index score 2025, which is what made them exemplary. So you can see the growth over time. This is their schoolhouse, is what we like to say, and you can see in each of those pieces of the pie where, how many points we got to give us the overall, oh my goodness, this is last year's house. This is not the correct house, this is not the one to frame.
The next graph is the one that counts.
This is the one that I, that I really want you to see. So this is the, if you look at the index score, so that green is where Miller was in 2023, and then you can see where Miller is in 2025. Miller is exemplary, which is super exciting. And you can see, it's about, so if you look at where that green dotted line is, in 2023, they were about the top 50% in Illinois. And then it flash forward to 2025, they're about the top 6% in Illinois, so to a growth of 44%.
This, this, I've looked at school data for 35 years. This is one of the most beautiful things I've ever seen in my life. In two years, we went from the middle of the state to the top 6% in the state. People in schools who pay consultants hundreds of thousands of dollars would kill for these results. This is unheard of. From 50th percentile in the state, so in the middle of the state for performance, according by our State Board of Ed, to the top 6% in the state. It's just unheard of. A lot of that goes to Sam and the team, some of this is dependent upon performance at Manning, which is strange.
So that is interesting, I wish I had the right house in here, I'm so sorry, I need to update this, I don't know how that happened, but.
That shows how far we've come.
ELA and the math growth, those middle two are actually dependent on Manning. So Manning and the proficiency. So really, the only part that Miller has control over in their house is chronic absenteeism. And the idea behind that is that Miller is the foundation, so what happens at Manning is really because of the great work that happened at Miller and Manning, so.
But once again, this next slide, not this, this one here? We're gonna frame this and put it in our boardroom and in our office. Sam, this is during your tenure, there's, nobody in the state's doing this, nobody. Nobody goes up by 44 percentile in two years. I've never seen it, except in this district, where we look at the junior high. This is incredible. What do we have there? Growth. And it's just off the charts. We have, and we celebrate this as a community, because everybody, it takes every team member from board, admin, teachers, support staff, students, parents, community, unheard of. Show me, show me somebody who did it better than this. It doesn't exist. I'm obsessed with this data for decades, it doesn't get any better than this.
So then that brings Miller to exemplary for the first time since this whole designation system began, which is really exciting. Manning, you can see growth over time at Manning, which is super exciting to see as well. And then, this is the correct house, I just double-checked on my phone to make sure. So this is the correct house, you can see where points were, points were earned out of how many they could possibly get. I do wanna point out one thing that is really cool on Manning's, which is a big reason for their growth from last year to this year, is that little pink box, that ELPTP, they earned almost all of their points there, and that's because I have to, I have to shout out Edith and the EL team, and, and all of the teachers at Manning. They really focused on that last year, and it shows in the, in the growth. So I know that was, came up last year when I presented this, that our ELPTP, we kind of scored a little bit lower there, and there were questions as to why. There was a whole plan in place, and it worked. So that's really exciting that our EL students are growing.
This is good data, these are numbers, but the next slide is the telling one.
Then this, so in 2023, we were in about the top 37% in Illinois. In 2025, we're in the top 1.5% in Illinois at Manning, which is super cool.
Never happens, never.
That's a growth of 35.5% over.
This does not happen, this doesn't happen except here, from the 63rd percentile to the 98.5 percentile? Oh my God. That's, people would kill for this stuff, okay, let's keep going, this is amazing.
Exemplary, super cool.
Top 2% in the state, and that's why we were number 12 in due page out of 208. It's unbelievable, but, okay.
So the junior high, over time, this is super incredible, we have been celebrating junior high, and they're still, so they had a little bit of a dip from last year to this year, but, I mean, barely, when you look at the house, it's like, you, it's barely a dip. So when you look at the house, this is where they gained all of their points, or this is where they were on their, their points.
They use multiple factors.
If I, if I recall, last year was a stellar year.
And I would, I would say both years were stellar.
Watch this, watch this. Watch this.
Yeah, both years were, are you ready?
Yeah.
Both years were stellar, but I, I don't know.
Live for this.
Both years were stellar, but I think they just had like, uh, I mean.
Best in the stellar, I said.
But you can see.
Oh my God.
Here, 2023, top 50% to 2025, they're the top 1%.
Our junior high was in the middle of the state and went to the top 1%. Two years in a row. We didn't just have a great year.
Yeah, last year they were in the top 1%, this year in the top 1%.
Both years, from the middle of the pack to top 1%. It's, never happens. Here are the nominees for the most improved schools in the state of Illinois, Miller, Manning, and the junior high. When does this happen? Only in 201. Find me the data, I want anybody, please. I don't wanna beg people to find somebody who's improved more than we have, nobody. Most improved district in the state of Illinois. I'd say in the country, but I don't have the data for that. But in Illinois, no question.
Westman High School, you can see over time, Westman High School's always been in the top percent or so in the state. So then here's the house. The one thing I want to point out, too, is ELPTP is, we're, Kevin, you're gonna need to jump in here, because you pointed something out the other day that I thought was really important. So if you look at the top of the schools in the state, most of the schools that, all of the schools that are ahead of us, actually don't even have that ELPTP.
They're not even held accountable for that.
So if you don't have a number of students who fit that, it actually is taken out, and then all of the other is, all of the other indicators are proportionally, are proportionally elevated, so.
So we're held more responsible, basically.
So then if you, that ELPTP, yes, there's always room for improvement, but that's higher than it was last year, so that's something to point out.
Because the, because the high schools ahead of us have a significantly lower, low end grade, likely.
20 students, do they, do qualifications that have it as part of the metric?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because we have that threshold now. We didn't have it a few years ago, but now we have that threshold.
Yeah.
So now it's part of the index score.
And when you have like less than 7% low-income population, it's less likely that you're going to have those students.
I mean, because most schools have, they're larger than ours, they mostly have the ELPTP. It would be a small school that wouldn't have the 20 students to meet that threshold. So they'd be some of the rural schools that that would apply to. So that's why you see some random schools that we've never heard of that have its high index scores because of the ELPTP component.
Interesting.
And that's redistributed to like graduation rate, climate survey amongst the other metrics.
Yeah, proportionally distributed.
Some of them are a little bit easier to ELPTP directly at the high school level.
Interesting.
Exemplary. And then this is our last year.
Yeah, but this is every year, since they started this thing. So every year that this designation system existed, the high school's been exemplary. There is very few schools in the state that can claim that. Every year, every year. So Dr. Weck, you and your team, continue the excellence and it's incredible.
So this is just a fun, this is a fun graphic, right? So the Summit of Designations began in 2018, so you can see over time. 2025, everyone's exemplary. A big celebration.
Huge goal, because I remember when I joined the board in 2020 and that's the list I saw.
Yeah. That's exactly, we said, we want to be exemplary and everyone in the entire district has worked together and that's what happened. So it's very cool.
We'll do, before you leave that slide, we'll do a comparison because the data's not been published for all the districts in the state. But based on last year's data, we couldn't find another district in the eight collar counties that had three or more schools and they were all exemplary. Even, you know, I don't want to name local districts, but even some of the most affluent, high-performing districts in the region are not all exemplary, but we are. And it's the same, it's ratios, it's the same markers. It's the Illinois State Board of Education. This is incredible. I'm so proud of our entire team. And what really got us here, I think, was the humility of our teachers to want to grow. They didn't put their egos first. They said, we can get better, and then they did it. And then the kids, it's just funny, when you love kids and set the bar high, they'll run.
Yeah, this is testament to our entire district. Every single person in the organization, from our aides, to our custodians, to our principals, to our teachers, every single person has been a part of this.
And the board.
School board, yes, absolutely. Families, everyone. So that being said, we're so excited where we are. We've made a ton of growth, but that doesn't mean we're done. Because we're in a continuous cycle of improvement. We always want to get better and we always say unless 100% of our students are meeting at the highest of levels, there's still work to be done. Because we care about every single student in our district. And so we have goals for this school year that you can see here. So they're all a little bit higher than the last school year. We have proficiency and growth goals. And then we also want to be sure that all of our buildings have a collaborative teacher score of very strong and chronic absenteeism, we want to keep strong at 5% or less district-wide. Our areas of focus this year, what the big area of focus is effective, high-quality instruction in every single classroom. Every building has taken this and run with it. They're doing some really amazing things. We used elements of effective lessons as our foundation for it and then every building is taking their own spin on it and just run with it. So we're always focused on compassion, strengthening our collaborative team meetings and intentional planning. But the big area of focus as a whole district is effective, high-quality instruction, so. And then these are some of Jack's notes from last year, but I actually kept them in because I was like, this is exactly the same for this year, right? So last year we reported it was the best performance in the district's history, but now I'm going to say this year is, right, Jack? So the notes are exactly the same, right?
Exactly the same.
So I thought that was kind of cool to bring last year's slide to say, oh wow, we had the best performance last year? This year is even better. So we're hoping for another year to just continue to grow. But thank you all and thank you to every single person in our organization.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to recognize Dr. Braun too, because she not only is a person who leads with compassion, but her strategic move to get us to rethink curriculum, especially K through 5, was essential to this occurring. We really, even though we thought we did, we were doing a lot of pretend work in the PLC meetings. We didn't have clear enough targets. We didn't have aligned enough assessments, so we couldn't look at student performance information and we couldn't give kids the specific feedback they needed to get better. And she said, we need to take our teachers and get them to work on curriculum during their school day so they could improve it. And it was an investment that at first I was very cautious about, but it was her leadership that pushed for that and then these are the results. So Carla does that every day with positivity and respect for others and compassion and brilliance in her design and her knowledge and her follow-through. Just incredible work.
Thank you. It really is a whole team work, though. Thank you.
Leaders make a difference and you've made a huge difference.
Thank you all. Does anyone have questions? I should have asked that. Any questions?
Exceptional. Thanks, team. You're up. Westmont High School course approvals.
Yes. First want to say, hey, great job, Carla. That was an excellent presentation. Want to thank our school board and Jack and our district office for all the support. You know, it's only possible with the teamwork that comes to play when it comes to supporting our students and giving them a great education. Let's say congratulations to all of our students and our staff for their hard work. It's a reflection of really who we are as a community, coming together and doing what's best for our kids. With that, some other quick announcements. I just want to say our regional, we had regionals tonight for volleyball. We won. So we are playing Thursday night for the regional championship. Can't wait for that. We also won the regional last Friday for boys soccer. We have the sectional game tomorrow night at 4:30. And then we have some runners who will be running in the sectional at Lisle on Saturday. So it's a big week for us as a high school. Can't wait, a lot of positive energy. Just wanted to put in that plug real quick. With that being said, I'm following up some great presentations by Carla and Sam to talk about course proposals. The first course that I was going to bring up is the AP Business with Personal Finance. This course is, it's a new course for AP, but it also ties into a possible college-level business introduction, which I think is advantageous for many of our students to really have that base in terms of a business or accounting career that they might want to pursue. So this is something that is student-driven and I think a great opportunity for our students, not only to get possible AP credit, but also dual credit as well down the road. We're hoping that COD signs up and this is also, it's an AP class, but also dual credit. Hopefully that gets approved in the next four to five years. Questions related to AP Business with Personal Finance?
Are we removing anything?
So we are looking at right now, it depends on who we can hire for the position. So there's a lot at stake here in terms of what the pool of candidates look like and what they're certified in. We would like to maintain as many courses as possible. We're thinking that maybe incubator might dissolve, but we're not at that point yet because we have to see what's out there in terms of candidates for this position. And that's, you know, there's a couple other pieces with that that we're looking into, but we're trying to find the best candidate to fill this role and then figure out what we can offer. Any other questions for AP Business with Personal Finance? No? Okay. The second course is Child Development. And this, we offered this back in 2012 and 2013 and after that, we then used TCD as a placement for students who are interested in this career because they have the state-of-the-art facilities and they have just many more resources that we could not necessarily offer to our students. However, TCD is no longer offering this. So we want to provide this opportunity for our students, it's a semester-long class, but I do feel like we do have, we have a high enough number of students who are interested in doing something along these lines. What we're going to do is then, instead of having two foods classes, we're going to have one and that same teacher's then going to teach the child development, where she's certified with that and I think it'll be advantageous for our students.
Do you know the number, because you said that this course is being removed from TCD?
What that number is?
The number of kids that, what's going to TCD?
But we're, from Westmont?
Yeah. Do we have many doing that course at TCD?
I think we probably had two or three, but I know that we're going to have a lot of interest at Westmont related to that. The problem is if students were to go over to TCD, that is a whole morning that is spent with child development. As opposed to if we offered at Westmont High School, it's one semester and it's a 50-minute class where they can still have the other six or classes or so.
And they're taking it away anyway at TCD.
Yeah, they, they took that away. So for next year. So right now they're still offering it, but for next year, it's no longer to be offered.
Do you know why they dropped it?
I don't necessarily know why. I think it was a lack of interest and I think they're going to put their resources into some other areas.
But you had it, that they, a lot of schools are offering it now, so they didn't have people coming.
Yes.
Yeah, a lot of schools have this program in their own schools, so.
I can speak to that just, I attend the TCD sometimes and the majority of the schools in DuPage actually offer their own child development. So it doesn't really, TCD doesn't really.
Right.
They offer it in-house. It's a, it's a really cool program.
Yeah, I think we will have a lot of interest with that though, as an elective for our students.
Is there additional significant, like a lot of, when we talk about bringing TCD courses back to the school, we talk about the investment and the cost in them because TCD offers something and is able to do something there just with their resources, right? Offer things that we cannot. So is there significant resources that we're going to need to bring in to the school? Or like equipment needs or, you know, it's not like computer programming or?
No, this one would not require the same types of resources as, let's say, welding or plumbing or HVAC, fire science, any of those. They require a lot of different supplies and resources in time. That's why they have it for, you know, three hours or so over at TCD because they need a block of time to be able to really get into the equipment, the supplies, talk about safety and all these other measures. For us, this, this course would not require that same type of support.
And it wouldn't require bringing on another instructor because we have one that is currently certified to teach?
Correct, yes. Our foods teacher is certified to be able to teach this for us. And she's excited about it as well. Any other questions?
No.
No? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before he leaves the podium.
Oh.
To recognize Dr. Weck and the outstanding work he does as a leader. Once again, another one of our principles, five essential scores for his leadership and his team, top 1% in the state. Chronic absenteeism with Kevin and Adam and the team, top 1% in the state. The only regular high school in Illinois. And Kevin made this happen with his team that's got platinum with access status. That is an amazing accomplishment. That's just tipping, you know, tip of the iceberg. He really loves our kids and his staff and works tirelessly and gets amazing results. So congratulations. And he's in contention for Illinois Principal of the Year.
Right.
It's pretty, it's pretty amazing and thank you, Kevin. And for you and the whole team, the team you lead, but so many, and we just take it for granted now, exemplary. Let me tell you something. There are a lot of local high schools that are very sad that they're not exemplary. They really are, it matters to them. So we can't just take that for granted and that Dr. West continued that tradition and the innovation he's brought with his teammates to change the schedule so our kids most in need get additional academic support. He didn't want to just rest on his laurels. He keeps innovating and continuous improvement. So another example of extraordinary leadership in our district. Thank you.
Hey, thanks for the kind words, but also for our school board, thank you for the trust that you give us in order to best serve our students and support our teachers. It really means a lot to us as an administrative team that you guys really believe in us and we can feel that. Gives us the confidence that we need to be able to go and do what we think is best for our kids. I really appreciate the fact you give up your time and also give us the trust that we need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. IASB resolutions.
Yes, I went through the little Resolutions Committee report. There's really only one that's resolution, but then there's constitut- constitutional amendments. So I'm going to start with the resolution. It's for school bus safety funding. IASB urges Illinois General Assembly and the Governor to enact the following. Establish school bus safety equipment grant. Provide financial assistance for the cost of factory-installed three-point seatbelt systems on school bus purchases and leased on or after July 30, July 1, 2031. They were saying the average cost to put seatbelts in a bus is between $7,000 and $18,000. And then the second part of this, they want to create a small district waiver that would extend the compliance deadline to July 1, 2034. And then direct Illinois Department of Transportation to approve alternate research-based occupant protection technologies. So they are recommending that we do adopt this proposal, so. You know, unless I hear otherwise, I was gonna vote for, yes for it. And then briefly, there's constitutional amendments. I'm going to go through this real quick. Item one, there's a membership section that was rewritten for clarification. Item two, delegate assembly, change to allow voting to be done in person or this is what changes, or by any means recommended by the Resolution Committee and approved by the Board of Directors. Item three, elections, nominations, clarification regarding nominations, ensuring the nomination is consistent with any Illinois Association of School Board of Directors governance policies. Item four, terms of office. They're changing the terms from one year to two years. Item five, Board of Directors composition, just a verbiage revision. Again, clarification. Item six, nominating committees, clarification of who is the chair. Item seven, divisions, officers. Officers need to take training within 60 days of being elected. Item eight, resolutions. I just have my notes rewritten for clarification. Item nine, declared emergencies. During emergency situations, the Board of Directors may make decisions that do not align with certain provisions of the Constitution for the IASB. And then finally, item 10, proposals. Majority support for amendment. This would require more time and engagement to pass the proposals they would like to pass, so. They recommend all these changes and again, unless I hear otherwise, you know, I'm going to vote along with their recommendations, so. Is there any questions? I went through that real quick.
So only, only one proposed to adopt?
Yes, yes, for the school.
That was the same last year, wasn't it?
There was only one last year.
Yeah. The year before, there was like.
Seven.
Yeah, there's a whole bunch, but.
I don't know if it was seven, but it was a big one.
All, all seemed very straightforward and.
Yeah.
Seatbelt seems like a good idea.
Yeah.
It's actually kind of a common joke. Why don't they have seatbelts on?
Well, because it costs $7,000 per bus.
It will get passed out of the district. It will get passed out. Like I, I sat as a chair for the Illinois ASBO Committee for Policy and we were against it, but only because of the cost, the price. And it, there were other decisions that were going on behind that, but you know, it's.
Do you know if anything like for buses that are being made, do they start? Are they starting to just have three-point seatbelts in them? Or they just make them the same way they've always made them?
I, I believe right now they're making them the way they've been. But then the other question's going to be, do we have to pro? Retrofit?
Retrofit, yeah.
There's a lot right now that's being talked about in Springfield, but I apologize, I'm out on the board.
No, no. No, I appreciate him, but.
Thank you for representing us at the conference.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And for taking this on. It's appreciated.
Yeah, no problem.
Speaking of the conference, let's talk about the conference. Did everybody?
I'm not going.
Carlos isn't going.
So enjoy this part of the meeting, everybody.
Yes. Did anybody have a chance to review the sessions?
Yes.
I will be very honest with the board. It's very questionable if I'm gonna, if I will be able to make it. In the last, in the last week, my mom has gone on hospice. So I just, I don't know what's, what that's gonna look like and that is also part of why I haven't had a chance to really dig into it. So I'm okay if you guys would like to table this discussion until the next board meeting, which is prior to, is prior to?
I think.
And I'm also good if we talk about it.
Taking a look at it and we've had like what we've had before, it's kind of the table that says where I'm going, where someone else is going. Especially when I get into like, there are two places I want to be and even like suggesting between us, if you were going somewhere, then I'll go the opposite. But I think that table is helpful because it just says it in writing and I don't necessarily have to speak about it. I can just put what I'm interested in. And I know what I wanted to look at and it may be late now is the extra.
Oh, the?
The extra ones, like one is Thursday, I did it last year.
Earlier stuff that happens before the main conference.
Those usually dry up before about now.
Yeah, but it's, it's not something, well, it's more so my dates and planning. Kind of my personal planning and if I can make those, but.
Because yeah.
Outside of that, I think you can kind of.
I did not create that table you're referring to from last year.
Yeah, you did not. It was between a board member.
If you want to send to me, I can see what was created. I don't think I ever got a copy. So I can do it for you, but I don't have it.
I can send it to you. We just kind of fill in our name. We didn't have to speak about it like, oh, I see Adina's going here.
Yeah. And that, I like that idea. You know, I have a couple I want to go to, but we could table it till next time. I'm not worried about it.
If, so Adina, if you can send that to Shannon and then we can build it into our routines a little bit better also potentially so that we can all kind of start to look ahead and then we will have a deeper discussion at the next meeting if we need to.
It doesn't even have to be a deep discussion. Just as long as we see where people are going, I just know.
Yeah, I can only go on Saturday and Sunday, so.
Did you have any thoughts on, this is the first time you're getting to take a look?
Yeah, I picked a couple that I thought, like the first one, like policy 101.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I thought that would be great for me to go to. But yeah, I can fill in like what I think.
Yeah. And then if you have a question, like, oh, I see that you, I mean, what we usually do is if I see someone going, I know they're gonna bring that back to the board table.
So we don't need to go to them.
And information about it and makes me feel better, but I'll get some information from someone else.
And don't forget that we do also have a couple of items to RSVP to for luncheons as well to just, just a reminder.
That tonight or tomorrow, that'd be great because some are due on Thursday.
Okay, moving right along. Process and timeline for filling board vacancies. So we have had two resignations on the board in the last couple of days, which triggers our process for filling board seats. The members have asked that their reasons for resignation remain private, but Jess and Lauren have resigned from the board. So that triggers a 60-day, right Shannon? That triggers a 60-day requirement to seat board members. And during that time, we will need to have a application period. We would like the application, it actually has to go out tomorrow because we're discussing this tonight. So the notice has to go out tomorrow and then it's 14 days. 14 days that it stays open for applications. And then we, we have until assent, I think the first date is December 21st is the first deadline, right? To seat a board member. Now, if we get only two applications, okay, that also hasn't happened. And yeah, then, okay. However, if we get more applications and dependent on how many applications, there were quite a few applications the last time when, when Carlos was joined the board originally. So it may necessitate a need for two nights of interviews. It really is very application dependent, but I've asked Shannon to put together a timeline, a potential timeline that gets us up to that 21st. And then what I'd like to discuss tonight is specific dates. So we can just nail down some dates. I think that regardless, we are going to need to schedule a special meeting. I hope that we don't need to use it. However, I want to get it on the calendar and get it on all of our calendars because as we know, nothing gets less busy from today through January 2nd. So I'd like, I'd like to get dates nailed down on everybody's calendar and also because quorum is four people, right? And we are currently at five board members. We really need to make sure that these dates work for everybody. So I'd like to kind of have that discussion now. So with that said.
I've included this in the board doc, so anyone?
If it, so Shannon, if it goes out tomorrow, right? Which is 10/29. The application deadline closes on what?
It would be November 12th if you do the 14 days. Or if you want to go more, make sure you can't go for 14 minimum.
And our next meeting is on what?
November 18th.
We don't meet again till November 18th?
Yeah. Just one meeting in November.
Yeah, right. I know that. I don't know why I keep forgetting it.
The meeting after 11/18 is what?
Uh.
12?
12.
16.
16.
And that is the only meeting that we have in December?
Right.
So ideally, we would fit anything in between 11/18 and 12/16 and seat them on the 16. We can do a special meeting if we, if we do like finals on the 16th. We could, if we schedule a special meeting between the 16th and the 21st, we could just do a seating, which I think is what happened for us. No, it wasn't. I think it was what happened for you. We just did a special meeting to seat you before the deadline, even though it wasn't a board meeting. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so the interview process will be a, a board meeting.
Closed session, closed session, board meeting. So we could, if the application deadline closes on the 12th, if we have all of this posted, we could review the applications between the 12th and the 17th individually and have interviews on the 18th. Have a first set of interviews on the 18th. Look, a lot of this depends on how many applications we get, right? If we get four applications, maybe we only feel the need to do one set of interviews and then, and then we seat them on the 16th.
Right.
I think we should schedule at least one more date in between the 18th and the, and the 16th.
I agree with that. Just in case.
Yes. Now, the other alternative is that applications come in on the 12th, we discuss them on the 18th. And then schedule two dates in between there, one for first interviews and one for second interviews. So what would you guys, really it depends on how would you like to go through the, the initial applications?
That was gonna be my question.
The 18th is also, there's scheduled a PR committee meeting and a strategic plan meeting.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep. Yes. Gonna be a fun one. Yeah.
That was, that was gonna be my question. How do we have, based on our policies, do we have an obligation to interview every applicant?
No, we do not. In fact, in the past, we haven't. In the past, we've had quite a few applicants. I think they narrowed it down to when we, when, actually, I think they might have interviewed 10 candidates when me, Adina and Jess were seated.
But that was for three positions, yeah.
Yeah, for three positions. I want to say we interviewed six for you, Carlos, and we.
I don't think it was that many, actually. We narrowed down to like?
It was four?
Three or four.
Hard time.
Okay. Four or six, either way. But that was narrowed, that was narrowed down from a, from a significant number of applications down to that kind of.
And so the, there is a process that our, that our policies allow for where board president or, I don't know who pairs down.
Yep.
Can we talk about what that looks like so we're all clear? Because I, because to me, if, if we were to end up getting 20, we're gonna have to pair them down.
Yes. The question is.
I would argue that even if we get 10, we're gonna want to pair them down.
Yes.
So how does it look?
The question is a little bit of would you guys like to pair them down together? Or would you prefer that like I pair them down with?
I am thinking just because we don't know the number, like I, my, this, I'm thinking this and you guys can say not, like to take the applications and the 18th, use that time to either make a statement. We have four applicants. We will just interview them on one day that we schedule or try to throw out today, but use the 18th as a day of either discussing who we have and it may be a short discussion. We're gonna interview this small enough, three, four people. Or if we have 20, using the 18th to discuss and pair down together. And so that, the 18th is a discussion day and then getting, I don't know, this may be, whatever the case, if it's a large number, we're gonna pair it down and interview that one day. And have this, an extra day between the 18th and the 16th to interview. So we.
Yeah, so and I, I think in the past, what we've, what we've done is we've had two days, one to do the interviews and then one to come back and make a decision. And then the seating. So that everybody could like sit on, I don't think we did second interviews.
Right.
When we came on, they did, they did multiple days of interviews because there were so many applicants and so many people, but that is, I don't think that's the situation.
And so many vacancies.
Yeah. So many, yeah, so many vacancies and so many applicants, so they did do two days of interviews just to get them in essentially, so.
So you're saying if, if you take my idea, like the 18th is discussion day or pairing down day, we still need two days?
I think we still need two days.
Oh, so I think this was said in like as an idea, a day to interview in between those, oh, that's only one board meeting. Or we have a special meeting after that board meeting to swear in.
So we, which we could also just schedule, right? We could say, hey, we'll use the 16th to make our final decision. In which case, we need to schedule that special board meeting to seat them, because we need to be able to, especially this time of year. We have to be able to have these dates, are there, you must be available on these dates to apply because we don't have flexibility on them, right? So you have to be available to be seated on this day, you must be available for an interview on this day. Yeah.
So if we do the 18th to discuss, make plans for the interview, the said day between that time and the 16th to make a final decision.
Then like the 17th, 18th or 19th would be special.
We essentially would do two special board meetings, one in between the 18th and the 16th and one after the 16th.
The one after the 16th would just be like a quick like?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. It would be very fast.
Okay. I mean, I, I can do that.
It would be very fast and we would like go to South and essentially that's the only, the only action is seating, maybe, maybe 15 minutes.
So both will be probably the interviewing and the seating will be at South, right?
Yes. Do you guys have a preference? Would you prefer to do a, a special meeting for seating the candidates post the 16th? Or would you like to try to seat the candidates on the 16th? Does anybody have a preference between that? Strong preference?
No.
No.
Okay. So then, does anybody have a strong preference if we try to schedule two board meetings in between the 18th and the 16th? Or one board meeting in between the 18th and the 16th?
My suggestion is the one.
Sorry, what was that?
My suggestion is the one in between.
Which is your preference?
Yeah.
But by scheduling only one in between, we're saying that we will be doing interviews on the 18th.
No. If we schedule one in between, it means that we'll do the special board meeting after the 16th. So, but if no one has a preference between the 16th and a special board meeting and we do have a preference between the 18th and the 16th.
I see what you're saying. I understand.
Hey, could all be moot points.
Sure.
If only two people apply. Yes. Could, could all be moot points. I hope that that's not the case. I don't think that that will be the case because I, I believe that this community is devoted to its schools. I choose to believe that and I choose to believe that there's lots of folks who, this is a great, this is a great way to join the board if you're not sure. Also, and I should point out and Adina mentioned this and reminded me of it, is that this is not a four-year term. This is until the next election because of where they're at with their terms. Jess and Lauren were both elected in the most, in the most recent cycle. So on the next municipal election, we will have our normal three seats up for reelection. And then there will be these two that are a two-year term as well. So we will essentially have five seats on the ballot.
So even though they're taking, even though the people that are being?
But this is what I did.
It's because of how much time is left in the term.
Essentially her term. So basically, the community will have a chance to vote in someone into, in this vacancy because it is so long, saying that they voted for two that aren't able to continue. They get to vote to have the board member in a seat for the last two years. But you, so I want to make that known because I, I did that, I was appointed and then I had to run for the last two years. And I ran for that position and then to, to remain on the board, I had to run for the four-year term. But I just want people to know that, they're still up to them, like basically, I don't, this is not for me.
Yeah.
It's still, they're still electing the next, the person for that. So they're just, that's just an information. I don't know if that's something that's put out in the information that people look at to make.
It will, I'll confirm with the county tomorrow what that next election.
Yeah. Just so they know that this isn't a whole, the three-year, the remaining three years.
It'll be part of the notice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So going back to it, I think for me, like making the 18th a discussion day because we don't know and how many, and if we have to make that a time to work together to pair down a large number, or it may be a short discussion. I just think because, because we have so much going on that day, I didn't want to make it an interview day.
Yeah, and, and I can also put together like a ranking thing. So we can all prior, in between the 12th and the 18th, we can review the applications that came in and rank them individually so that then when we come in on the 18th, we kind of already have at least a jumping off point. Hey, maybe we rank them all very, we're like all on the same page. Maybe we're all on a bunch of different pages, but at least it gives us a data point to start with. So we're not like starting from scratch on the 18th. So hopefully we can shorten it a little bit.
Because realistically, if we, on the 18th pair it down and then we have, say like December 2nd, we meet to interview them, we could then confirm them on the 16th. So we wouldn't need that second special one. Okay. I'm, I'm good with that.
So one in the middle and one?
Yeah. Because I think, I think, I thought I heard you say something about getting them paired down and actually doing some interviews on the 18th. Was that, that was something that was talked about early on and that, and I don't think we're going that direction. That sounds fine to me.
But we're saying if it's like a large number to interview and we already have the two committee meetings plus our, I don't think our board meeting's long, but that's a lot going on if there's a large number.
This can't get.
No, I get it. I totally get it. What I wanted.
Strategic planning, while ideal. Sorry. So Jack mentioned, right? We can adjust some of the schedule on the 18th. The reality is, is that, and I don't want to do this, but the strategic planning meeting and the PR committee meeting are optional and this is not. We do not have a deadline on either of those. If we need to adjust as much as I don't like to change things that are scheduled already because we make commitments.
And I, I've got a feel for those. We have, we've been waiting for those meetings.
Well, the one thing, we could at least truncate the PR meeting.
Yeah. This is a very extenuating circumstance, so I, I just-
I would prefer not, because we've had, we've committed that date for the board to work strategically with the admin team, but the PR meeting, we could maybe truncate a little bit.
So, all, what I was gonna say was, like, if we're not, if we're gonna be having, we're gonna have a discussion on the 18th as a group, can we talk a little bit about that process? What, just real quickly, is that something that happens in open or closed?
Closed. This is, so, anything in relation to, when we're talking about, about a person specifically, is closed.
Got it. So that would be a closed session discussion.
Yeah. So right now, we are talking about the process, which must happen in open because we are not talking about specific people. But once we are talking about specific people, it is essentially just like if we were hiring.
Then that answers my question.
It would happen in closed.
Thank you.
So, yeah, and I just, like, going ahead with that plan, one in between and one after, that may or may not be needed. After the 16th.
Okay, so Shannon.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have some dates we can look at between the 18th and the 16th? Would you guys like to try to keep it on a Tuesday?
Yeah.
It's impossible.
Okay.
Doesn't this look? So I will say-
Uh-huh.
The week of December 8th, you start to run into your, um, winter concerts at the high school junior high level. And Manning, those nights.
So if those are-
Mm-hmm.
Things to, like, that week is tricky if you have students. Is that a better week, is that?
So-
We got a first, the first week.
Yeah. I can't do anything the week of Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Yeah. We could maybe figure something out, so, Tuesday, the 12th. You mean the second?
What, the second you mean?
Second. Yes, I did mean the second. Tuesday, the second?
I'm free.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay, Tuesday, the second, we will plan interviews. Let's plan three hours.
Mm-hmm. So, I do work that day, so it's-
So what time do you need to be out by?
Nine.
Nine. So let's start at 5:30? Or do you guys wanna try to start at 5?
Five.
Yeah. We'll shoot on-
Wait, hold on.
I, um, I can get here by like 5:15.
But 5:30 it is.
5:30.
Split the difference. 5:30 to 8:30. And that gives us the ability to essentially interview three applicants for each role if we feel, if we feel the need.
And that will come as a calendar invite through the board, right?
Yeah. Uh, yes, and it will be a posted meeting also.
And so that pretty much tells us we're narrowing down to three each position, at least. So whatever number we get, we're at the most interviewing six people.
Max interviewing six people.
Okay.
Yeah. I think that is fair. Do you guys, do you guys wanna do, or do you wanna do four, two for each?
I-
I'm good with three.
I, I'm with-
I'm at the max.
I, I mean, I, I would like to keep the max at two, but, um, the, the, but that's just me.
For four people, is that?
I think, I think Adina made a good point about having the discussion on the 18th about how that might need to look. I mean, I think maybe, like, yeah, let's propose a max of six, but what if we-
It could be four.
We could, we could change that. We can change that.
What are the applications due again?
The 12th.
Of November. I'm gonna just go on, I know Edith and I have talked about this, we can truncate her meeting. We can do some of that, we'll work it into the slot so you have some more time on the 18th of November to be able to do this.
Yeah. I'm, we're, I'm not concerned. Also, like, I want to be able, I want the whole board to be able to work with the admin team, and we are too short. The point of doing the strategic meeting is that we, we work together, and we will be adding two members. So if we push that until we have those other two members.
That actually-
I think we actually should think about that.
Which, that actually kinda makes sense.
I, I don't wanna do it. We've had it planned, and we've been very excited about it, and also, right now, Alex is the newest on the board. We have-
If we're gonna, if we're gonna, if we're gonna move that, I'd rather make that decision sooner than later.
Okay.
Cause I think a lot of-
That's a lot of moving parts there. I mean-
We're not, we're not limited to one meeting between the board and admin either.
Yeah, I just wanna, I wanna be, I wanna use our time.
And their time.
Our time and their time.
I like-
Effectively.
Even the point you said, that we, we're not limited in just that meeting. We can have another strategic after. Yeah, but if that's already on calendars, this work we start, that we can continue.
How about, can you please ask for, or put a poll in our update? So we can all think about it for a couple of days? And respond.
What do you want me to pull?
Just if the board has strong feelings about moving that, moving the meeting to January when we have the seated members, or keeping it?
Uh, my question is, that's already on the calendars of our admin? Is that right?
It's already on the calendars of the admin, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it seems, it seems, I mean, I understand the reason, but it just seems like, it's hard to get that thing on the calendar. It's a lot of hard calendars to align.
Is there one in second semester already set up?
I think we should have it, that's what I'm saying.
No, well, that's what Jax was saying. I think we could do more than one meeting, right? But, and maybe that's, maybe that is a good cue to, like, why aren't we doing that more often? But right now, it feels, it feels, I agree that having the other, the two new people, whoever they are, in, that makes sense, but we should do this. We've been saying, well, this is like a long overdue.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
There's much to catch up on anyway for a new one, so we have a, a note more exciting to have the next one in the- I don't, that's what I'm saying, I don't, I'm trying to take away the need of a doodle poll. I think we can say it now, if we wanna move that or keep it.
I'd like to keep it. That's just my personal opinion, but I, I, I could completely get on, in the, on board with, if we decided to move it. But my personal preference would be to keep it.
Yeah, I, I agree, I'd like to keep it. We could always have a second one later.
Okay.
We should do it more often.
Yes.
Yes.
If that's what the board wants, we will schedule a second one in second semester when the new board members are seated.
Yeah, and it could, it doesn't have to be January. It can be whenever it makes the most sense.
I guess be also, we can just schedule that too. Um, okay, so moving on to the second meeting after the 16th. So the 16th is obviously a Tuesday. Remind me, no school, uh, school ends on Friday, the 19th? Would you guys like to try to schedule that meeting the 17th, 18th, or 19th of that week? Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday?
I would really prefer not the 19th.
Okay. Fair. You don't wanna, you don't wanna meet on a Friday night? After work?
Just so happy to-
In late December?
School's, um, holiday party.
Weird!
That I would like to attend. But I will come if that's the day we all choose.
Feel like it might be ours also, isn't that often?
The options are Wednesday, Wednesday or Thursday now?
17th or the 18th. Yep.
I'm-
I'm open for both.
I'm good for both.
I can do either, but, um, Wednesday I have to do later. I get to swim.
Thursday it is.
Go ahead, just run the calendar.
Thursday.
I'm kidding.
You can have it. Would you like to come over? You could come sit here.
Huh?
Wanna come sit here? You can have it. No, I'm kidding.
No more changes.
That's a 2026 thing. Uh, 12, 18, and that will just be a, a fast meeting. 5:30, 6 o'clock, what would you guys like to shoot for?
I can do 5:30 or later.
Either.
5:30 it is at South.
And that would only be if-
That would only be if we do not see them on the-
You don't make a decision.
And the one on the second will also be at South, right?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. The 18th and, but the 18th and the 16th aren't at South, right? Those are, those are-
I think we should think about having the 18th at South entirely. I know that the previous plan was to start here and, or start here and move there. Just like, guys, I need simplicity in my life. The thought of, like, bouncing between with all of these new additional things.
You're talking about the, the 18th right now?
The 18th.
Yeah.
Of just having the meeting at, at South on that day.
You wanna take a drop on that, and I'll ever, start advertising?
Do you guys have a preference? Were we gonna do PR here, meeting here? And then go to South for the strategic?
Meeting here, and then strategic, cause there'd be so many people.
We could do PR there as well.
Okay.
I'm both, we'll, uh, make that formal announcement now.
Okay. There we go. So that one's at South also. Okay, so to recap. Application announcement is gonna go out tomorrow on the 29th. The deadline is 11:12, okay? We will get those applications to all the board members after, uh, end of business on 11:12.
They come to you.
No, they come to me, even.
Unless you would like to pick someone else since you have a lot going on. We can adjust it.
Um, could they come to Carlos and I? Are you okay with that? Can we share?
Sure.
Just, just in case.
Other board members can help, it's okay, guys.
Oh, it's, of course, it's fine.
It's all good. It's all good. But, uh, just in case, yes. Can they come to both of us?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then we'll get the apps over to the team end of business on the 12th, which would be like 5 o'clock, I'm gonna call it.
Mm-hmm.
We'll get those applications over to everybody on the 13th, along with a ranking survey. And so then if the board can please get those back to, get those ranked by the 17th so that, um, we can have the information for the meeting on the 18th.
Just a quick question, I mean, uh, whatever. The, why, since they're gonna be shared with everybody prior to the 18th, every, every board member prior to the 18th anyway, why not just have them come, is there, is like a procedural reason why we don't have them come to everyone?
I think it's like, it's, I don't know, it's addressed to the president, but-
It's addressed to the president, they share, and I went off of what other districts do. I don't know if there's a reason why.
Yeah.
I'll be honest.
Probably for the, I mean, just for the streamlining of, like, having, telling, giving the instruction to send it to that many people seems odd. That's true.
Well, it would be like, it would be, send it to Board of Education, cause Board of Education-
I was gonna say, isn't there, isn't there an alias or something?
Only comes to us, it doesn't go to anybody else.
I kinda think it makes more sense. I mean, you're only given the person has to apply one address, and we all get the email.
That's true. Stringlining.
And it's, and that way, there's no, there's no resending of these things later. I, I mean, maybe there's something I'm not thinking about here, guys, but I just think that it's, 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 we're not doing anything with, we're not planning to do anything with those applications before we sit down on the 18th, other than the ranking.
Right.
And, and that's even thinking about it a little bit, right? That's not even the finalized ranking or anything like that.
Right.
So to me, it doesn't, I can't see a benefit to waiting until we, until the application process closes before sharing the information with everybody. Am I missing something?
I don't think so. Okay, so, I think that's fair?
Yeah, no, I was just saying, I know districts have not done it that way, only because if one person responds to the entire thread, then-
Yeah, so this is-
No, there's no response to it.
Right, no, I'm just saying, that's all.
This is what I was just gonna say.
Shannon caught me, uh, looking.
Is that I will respond to each application, thanking them for applying, and reiterating that they need to attest that they can make it to these meetings. So, no responding, I will respond to them.
Okay.
Okay? And I will respond to them without asking them to reattest that they can make it to all of these things because frankly, that is the very first, if you cannot make it to the interview, we cannot interview you, and we do not have the time. We cannot schedule another meeting for interviews, so-
All interviews are in person.
Yeah, no, for sure.
That is the very first, yes. All interviews are in person, for, I guess, do we? Are we allowed to do them virtually?
That I don't know either.
I don't think we're even allowed. All interviews are in person. All interviews are in person at South.
That's a good question.
Do you guys want to have any flexibility on that?
I don't see why we would not have flexibility on that, but-
I don't see why.
I don't, I'm not, why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we, why do we have to interview a person in person?
Um, I think it's, I don't know, it's just, the setup is, again, time, and I know you've asked this before, but having, this is at South, so, the, um, I don't know, just clear, I don't know.
In principle, I agree with you. In principle, I agree with you, and-
If there's any issue with what it is.
This is an in-person job. And if you cannot find the time for, if you cannot, with this much notice, adjust your schedule and show us that it is that important, I think that for me, so, yes. It, in principle, I agree with you 100%, and also, it is really hard to function on this board when we don't have seven people.
Online and, and asking that, and not that we're employing anyone, but I think, just all caveats, if something goes wrong, or that, if the fee doesn't come through, we don't hear, what do we do with that person that we agreed to interview? I think we, it's, you know, this is the easiest one.
I'm, I'm thinking about other things, but I, I don't, I mean, I, I don't wanna get nitpicky either. I mean, not that you're being nitpicky, I don't, I don't wanna, like, dig, dig, dig here, but, but, you know. There are also a great candidate who has a personal emergency and says, I can make the time, but I have to be in Denver. You know, I have a personal emergency. I'm just thinking of situations that, you know.
Which, if that happens on-
This is 2025.
If that happens on the first, we can talk about it. Because a personal emergency would happen on the first, not a month before. But at this point, they're getting a month of notice, of time and date.
I would also argue you could just run for election in the next six months. Which none of the people applying did, so.
Yeah, it's also a good point. I'm just, I'll, I'll be fine.
Alex, let's not get logical.
But walk in the cold and get your signatures and-
This, look, this is, this is how we joined the board. It is, it is a appealing way to try out something that you might be interested in.
You don't complicate yourself for four years, or three years, or a year and a half.
Having done it myself.
In fact, four of the five of us have done it.
Having done it myself and then run for election. You know what I mean? And decided to stay.
Yep.
Or to try to stay.
Okay. So, meetings, uh, sorry. Ranking, I'll respond. Um, I'll send you guys out the ranking thing after the 12th, after everything closes, and then we'll come back on the-
No, the ranking thing.
Yes, the ranking thing, I'll send them. We will meet on the 18th, make final decisions if necessary. Uh, plan to interview regardless on the 12th, regardless of how many applications we get. many applications we get, we will do interviews on the 12th, um, and if.
I'm second.
Second, why do I, it's cause I have a, I, my dash is not like, is not like a cross enough, it's too up and down, so I can.
As long as you get there on the second.
I'll be there, it's on my calendar now.
The 12th will be too late.
Um, we will interview on the second, you might need to remind me, we will interview on the second regardless, um, and if all things go swimmingly, we will seat on the 16th, or, um, if we need another day to discuss, we will seat on the 18th.
Wonderful.
Got it.
Good job.
I am including that in the notice that they must be available both those dates for seeing appointments, like, those are the two potentials.
Yes, and we're this, we're gonna post this on our socials also, can we ask the PR team to, uh.
And then, did you have any questions about the application process, the way it was listed in here? Can you refresh? Um, qualified and interested residents should submit a resume and a letter explaining their interest in serving on the District 201 Board of Education, I have no later than 4:00 PM on date, well, now we have a date. In addition, candidates must show familiarity with the board's policies and the district's 201 mission to educate and empower students to be academically prepared and socially responsible, it goes through their, what is required, you know, being a, um, a resident.
Registered voter.
Please send both the resume and letter of interest no later than 4:00 PM, again, we reiterate.
No, let's keep that at 4:00 PM, yep.
Yep, okay.
No need to push that further.
Um, so it's just a resume and a letter explaining.
Yep.
You guys go with that?
Seems good to me.
Do you have any questions, those probably will get posted tomorrow morning, but it is in the update and it's in the board docs for you to review, so, let me know.
Okay, great, thank you, everybody, and thank you for working through these dates. Um, finance and facilities recap.
So, uh, before this meeting, we had finance facilities, where we discussed, uh, Manning's expenses and its upkeep, along with the TIF funding and the projects that we need to be doing, uh, I will work on recreating a 10-year prior lookback on how much has been spent on supply of materials, purchase services, whatever is related to Manning, so that, uh, we can better understand what we're spending on and why.
Thank you.
That's appreciated, thank you.
Lively discussion this evening.
I, um, I think I just wanna state for our community, and something else that we talked about is, um, I think something that our community asked about after, um, the referendum and what happens now, what, you know, what does the board do with finances and trying to answer, that I think this, us as a board team need to discuss that, to be able to articulate that to our community of what, what happens, um, in the off chance that we're not doing anything besides upkeep and maintenance of our buildings. What does that happen, what does that mean budget-wise, you know, that we also ask Ron to kinda look at, um, as we make decisions, and to be more specific and clear, what does it mean for programs, what does it mean for what we budget for our curriculum, um, when we, you know, have to use money, um, to upkeep our buildings, and so I think our community needs to have that information too, Leah said that very clearly, that, um, when saying, making a decision on what other people, what you want us to do, um, about our facilities, is knowing, uh, making a decision to choose, um, what need, what happens if we don't do anything.
Yeah, what, what potential cuts would have to come.
With the choices.
Yes.
With the choices, and I would, I would also say, I don't, I didn't mention this, um, during that, we should, we should explain the process and the feasibility, um, of dissolving the district, or joining another district, and the impact there that has frequently come up over the years, dissolving, retaining the high school, or dissolving the high school and retaining the elementary, and, um, that process is, is quite involved and is not up to us alone, it's up to every single other school board accepting that, that would be impacted, but this is something that we have learned over the course of time of service on the board, and, and it's hard to, there's a packet on it, there's a pamphlet on it that explains it kind of okay, but, um, it's, it's one of those things that like, we recognize that is almost impossible to do, um, but let's clarify, is it possible, and the impact, you know, also the tax impact, like, there are some of them where like our taxes, there's some ways to do it that our taxes like are added on to the other, there's, there's a bunch of different ways.
It's not, it's easier said than done, it has come up, it's not our ideas, but it has come up in many of our town halls, so we want to have, that's something that hasn't said, and people should be educated on that. It's hard for me to say, when we just went through a presentation on the huge accomplishments of every school in our district, but, again, these ideas have come up before, um, again, it's not my idea, but I think it has to be stated, and.
We've vetted them, we've like vetted them, but we need to like, prove that we've vetted them, if that makes sense, with documentation, did you have a question, Carlos?
I just think, I don't know if this is, I mean, this is a discussion about the finance and facilities meeting recap, but what I, what it did come up was to talk about a plan for never passing a referendum.
Mm-hmm.
And so, one of my sort of things about being on any board, this board or any board, is that it's really, we're, we're here, in a lot of ways, we're here, um, to listen to what the administration proposes, and to give our feedback and ask for either modified proposals, or, or, um, updated proposals, or completely different proposals, and, um, I don't, I mean, we, second failure of the referendum, which was, a, um, referendum was a no vote to a larger to read than the first one, um, I think it's time that we, that we as a board ask the administration, what does the scenario look like where a referendum never gets passed? No referendum, any referendum at all, at any amount, because so far, that's what we've got, and I'm not talking about giving up, I'm not talking about that, I'm saying that it is logical that this board asks this administration to propose a 10-year plan.
Mm-hmm.
From a finance standpoint, it takes into consideration the needs of the district and the finances of the district as they, as they stand without winning a referendum, for any amount, for 5 million, 10 million, 7 million, any amount, any amount.
And the reality is, it is not the second failed, it's the fifth, cause there were three.
Better, better, better still.
There were three prior that failed.
You know, so, I, I just, it, I think it's irresponsible if this board doesn't ask the administration for that, and so, it's, it's our duty to ask you for that, and like the timing, I don't wanna put too much timing pressure on that, because, I mean, I don't think that's fair at all, um, but I, I do think it's time that we ask you for that, so.
And ask ourselves even.
Well, yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not displacing all the responsibility or the pressure, I'm just saying that it's, it's something that has to get.
No, I'm not saying that you are, like, it's just a reality check for.
Yeah, right.
Us.
Right.
Like, there's hard decisions, and as we ask for new board members, be ready, part of the requirement.
Yep.
We're not the first district, and the previous referendums were so much different.
They were a long time ago.
Not that different.
They were a long time.
Well, they were material different, they were material different, because they were not proposing to renovate an entire school, the, a completely different referendum, but we're not the first district that didn't pass their first referendum, and the fact that the first one lost by two votes is incredible in its own right, so, there's other districts that have faced this, that were told no by the community, and then eventually the, the referendum passed, and I anticipate, if you're asking for administrative direction, that the next referendum that we would propose to the board would be significantly different than the last one.
I think we are getting ahead of ourselves, I think we are getting ahead of ourselves. Uh, the choice of a referendum going on or off the ballot is that of the board, and we need this information as well, to make, to even, to even contemplate that. We are a long way off from even the opportunity for another referendum, just by virtue of how the election cycle works, and our, when we are allowed to ask for things, so, this is not, we do not need to make this decision tomorrow, we are not tied to something.
True.
Very, very imminently, like, we don't need to drop everything and get this work done, and also, it, to Carlos's point, we do need to ask for this, for this now. Yeah. Okay. Anything else on finance and facility? Moving on to our action items of the evening, the chair will entertain a motion for authorization for the submission of the state of Illinois, uh, fiscal year 26 school maintenance project grant application as presented.
I'll move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Marin.
Yes.
Ms. Conover.
Yes.
Ms. Mill.
Yes.
Mr. Avia.
Yes.
Dr. Hoover.
Yes. Uh, motion passes, and just a reminder that we discussed that at the last meeting. Uh, the chair will entertain a motion to approve, uh, the board action on closed session minutes as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Conover.
Yes.
Ms. Mill.
Yes.
Mr. Avia.
Yes.
Dr. Hoover.
Yes.
Mr. Marin.
Yes.
Motion passes, uh, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the destruction of the verbatim closed session minutes from September 2023 through February 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Mill.
Yes.
Mr. Avia.
Yes.
Dr. Hoover.
Yes.
Mr. Marin.
Yes.
Ms. Conover.
Yes, just a reminder on both of those previous motions, these are standard things, we just do them like roughly once every six months. Uh, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the contract with Special Education Consultant Behavioral Perspective, Inc., not to exceed $15,000 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Dr. Avia.
Yes.
Dr. Hoover.
Yes.
Mr. Marin.
Yes.
Ms. Conover.
Yes.
Ms. Mill.
Yes. Superintendent's report.
I had a lot to say earlier, so let that stand. [laughing]
Board reports.
Wow, I just wanna thank, uh, Mr. Urlaub, uh, Mrs. Beederman, um, they put on, uh, wanna get this right, Fine Arts Cafe concert, um, showcased talent of the choir and the band, um, they were exceptional performances, I enjoyed them a lot, they sounded really good, um, students displayed their artwork, so there's a lot of talent at the high school, you know, some, some great talented kids.
Saying Fred's gonna let, um, say something about the sports teams, and Dr. Weck did that very well, but just with, even the soccer is the first regional championship since soccer was started at the high school, so.
It's amazing.
Ludos to them, they continue, um, um, so they, you know, they have, I guess, the whole week at the high school, and another part of that is that we're hosting volleyball and soccer, so, great, um, um, big things for our high school, and they've been seen in the organization, and thanks to our boosters and things like, so, shout out to them for, um, working so hard to make, um, these, these games and our competition go smooth. Ms. Don also, so AV.
Awesome, all very exciting stuff, public comment? No public comment, okay. Uh, future meetings and events, October 31st is a PLC dismissal time, uh, make sure everybody's safe out there trick or treating on Friday, uh, the Westmont High School Fall Play, uh, November 7th at 7:00 PM, November 8th at 2:00 PM and 7:00 PM, and November 9th at 2:00 PM, and correct me if I'm wrong, seniors get in for free? Yeah? I feel like we've said that before.
I don't know.
No?
I don't know.
Tell them that Leah Conover, put it on Leah Conover's tab.
Well, depends on what.
Put it on Leah's tab. You can put it on, you know what, put it on Jax's tab, I'll take it.
Not senior students.
Oh.
Oh, not senior students, they need to pay.
Not senior, senior citizens.
Senior citizens.
Yes.
For driving older.
Let's make an executive decision.
I know.
They can, they, laypeople can pill us.
I didn't think it. Don't they get in, don't they get into all the?
They should.
I feel like all the sporting events, I feel like we have that, maybe we need to double check.